Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our roundtable discussion. I'm Anna Johnson, County Council Member for District Eight. And although Charleston County. I usually start off with the pleasure of allegiance, so if you always join me. Let's do that now. I have the flag right here if you don't have one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic of Canada. One nation under God, in the freedom of liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you all. All right, so today we are covering several areas here. And I'd like to, before we get started though, recognize our administrative staff. This Kristen Worsner, Hers Hess Worsner, you know, I like your maiden name, right?
But anyway. You can call me that, it's fine.
Well, your husband may not like that too well. But anyway, I certainly want to thank you, Ms. Worsner, so much for your administrative assistance that you provided the county. Certainly, I think it's five years.
Yeah, coming up on five years.
Five years, okay, but every day I feel like you do such a great job and you are an asset to me, so I thoroughly appreciate the work that you do for the county and certainly for myself.
Happy to do it.
No.
Second one.
Now, okay, all right, thank you. And if we have anybody else that's in that capacity, I'd like to say thank you as well. I know that we have directors and our DCAs and all that, but everybody. We can't do this job by ourselves. And so we have to depend on your expertise and the work that you provide to us. So I'm appreciative. And of course now, every now and then you might have a little slip up, but and if you know, if that happens, you know, well, I'll say, well, okay. Well, you know, you got to get it right now because you have my right hand. And I'd like for things to be right so that, you know, I know I'm getting information from the experts. And that's, 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 that's me. That's what I expect. And you all do a good job with that. So thank you. That being said, we're going to go right on into our discussion for the day. I know we have several topics and I was hoping that we'd be able to cover all of them, the questions that people have. And this is the first time, Mr. Davis, that we have had you on. So you'll do your presentation first and give the audience a chance to ask whatever questions they may have about it.
Okay, will do. Thank you. Again, my name is Darryl Davis. I am the county's new Director of Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization. And it is a department that the county created to deal with the housing crisis that I'm sure by now all of us feel at least in some regard. And to just to work on distributing the county's allocation of the federal ARPA funds. And our goal there is to create transformational change and not just to spend the money and have it gone. So we are being deliberate about how that is being rolled out. So you'll hear more about our housing programs later. We're still putting, those take a little bit longer to put together and to get out there. But there are two programs that we have right now that I want to make everyone aware of. And the first is our nonprofit pandemic relief program. And that is geared towards any nonprofit organizations in Charleston County that have been delivering services to Charleston County residents related to the pandemic. So we will reimburse your costs up to $50,000 for anything that you have spent on direct assistance to county citizens. Going back to the beginning of the pandemic. And you can contact our office. The information is on the website. But we also have the South Carolina Association for Community and Economic Development that will be assisting people in filling out their applications. And we are doing this as a reimbursement program so we could get the money out quickly. And so there would be very little to do in terms of compliance on the backend. We'll verify those costs upfront and then you'll be done with the compliance. And there will be additional programs to assist nonprofits. What we're working on now is a capacity building grant that organizations can use for computers or to get their licensing in order or to build their board or any of those non-ongoing expenses that'll help make these organizations stronger. The second program we have going on right now is our micro business pandemic relief program. And this one is for any Charleston County business with a few exceptions, and those exceptions are on the website, but any Charleston County business that did not get any previous pandemic relief. And this is based on your losses between when the pandemic started and now. So if you can demonstrate a loss, we will provide assistance to you up to $25,000. And that application is also open right now. The information is on our website. And we will also have a couple of organizations out in the community that can help people fill out those applications. That will be posted to our website hopefully before Friday. I can't post those until the contract is signed. But if you need assistance before then, you are certainly welcome to contact our office and we will make sure that you're able to fill out those applications. And I saw at least one pastor on here. So I do want to mention one thing is that we are looking to build partnerships with churches in the community. Everyone agrees that that is the best way to get the types of services that we're working on out to the people who need them. So we are looking for churches to partner with us, both for informational purposes and to actually help us distribute and run the programs. So and that's going to be critical to the rural communities where, excuse me, the county does not have the same type of infrastructure that it has, you know, in North Charleston and places like that. So we are, we are trying to reach out to any particularly rural church that wants to help us get these services out to the people that need them. So you can contact our information. It's all on the website. And I think with that, I will open it up to questions.
Could you just give them your phone number, just in case?
Sure. Oh, you had, there we go. My direct number is 843 202 6992. 843 202 6992.
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that Darryl Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, Reverend Morrison is from Edisto Island. And so Reverend Jones on earlier from Wadmellaw. Okay, those are the two pastors that I can see so far.
Okay, and we'd like to get out there and meet you if you'll have us. We're trying to get around to different parts of the county. So if you contact us and let me know a time in a day, we can come out and meet you with some of the staff folks so you can get familiar with us.
Okay, oh, yeah, Reverend Brown. Looks like he's, okay, all right. So do we have any questions? Ask all your questions now while we have the man right here.
Hi, Darryl, welcome to the, to the post. I'm Karen Alexander Banks. I don't live in John's Island, but we have property on John's Island, so I'd like to eventually move back there. I did notice in the link that someone sent that there's, you're looking for housing projects in need of funding. Can you kind of go over that for us?
Okay. I'm glad you asked that one because I forgot to bring that one up now. Housing is obviously the biggest reason that our department was created. And we are, and the county council has put some substantial resources behind that. And we have, we're working with a consultant on a countywide housing plan. But at some point, we're going to need to deploy resources into actual projects that are going to get houses built or should say homes built and homes remodeled or rehabilitated or whatever the need is. The issue is we need to develop a pipeline. So we, what I did not want to do is just to put out an RFP for any kind of projects, because what would, what would happen is that every developer in the state would rush to throw together a project to apply for those funds. We want to fund what people in the county are actually working on. So any of the nonprofits around, around, around the county. I know there are a couple of churches that are looking to do housing-related projects. We want to know what they are and what the need is. Because when we release an RFP, we wanted to address those needs first before we go asking for developers to come in and just make up projects. So if we're going, if we're going to address the housing problem in Charleston County successfully, the nonprofits are going to need to be a big part of that. And so we want to make sure that that goes back to us having the the capacity building money. We want to strengthen these organizations so they will be more viable in the long term. And then we want to help them get their housing projects across the finish line. So essentially, I'm looking for any project that is heading towards construction that has a development budget that can demonstrate we need X amount of dollars in order to begin construction. That's what we're looking for. Get that information to us and we will work on getting some projects funded and getting some units built and rehabilitated.
Dude, those rehabilitation, it's got to be people that own the house, not that they're his property or anything.
Not necessarily. We can't now, the federal pandemic relief funds actually come with a lot more leeway than your typical HUD funds. So it does allow us to do some different things. There are still some restrictions. But we are looking to be creative in terms of what we address and how we address it. So I've been taking all kinds of meetings with folks with all kinds of ideas who say this is the need. And then we look at the regulations and determine can we use this money to address that need? So this isn't as, it's not quite as restrictive as some of the previous HUD funds that were spent by the county. Again, there still are some restrictions. So if you know of a need, we are definitely willing to take a look at it. And I know we are looking to, we're looking at how we could potentially build rental housing on heirs' property. I know one of the reasons that folks, you know, you end up with 30, 40, 50, sometimes over 100 people that own a single piece of property and somebody wants to cash out and that's when it creates the big mess. Well, if we can create an income stream and we, you know, we can get families to agree that we'll use part of this property to build rental housing that will create an income stream that will make it less likely for that lone heir to try to sell their share and create that create that confusion. So we will be reaching out to the Center for Heirs Property. I think I got the name right. We will be reaching out to them. We've already made contact. We haven't actually sat down and started working on it yet, but that is part of our strategy.
Great, thank you.
Darryl, would you also mention the housing survey that's online that everybody?
Oh, thank you. Yes. When you go to our website, there is a link to a housing survey. And actually, it has a little, it has to do with a little bit more than housing. It also talks about how we deploy these resources for reinvestment into the community. So number one, I'd like everybody on this call to take the time. It's a quick four-minute survey. No personal information is collected. We would like you, you guys to take that survey, but we would also like you to get that survey out to your networks. Get that survey out to your family members, your, the people who go to church with you. If you're part of an organization, folks in Charleston County, get them to fill it out. We are really trying to to determine where the need is, how people think we should distribute these resources. And for the pastors on the call, it is really important that you get this out to to your constituency because typically rural and minor, rural minority and poor communities are often underrepresented on these surveys. So we really need your guys' help. Send it to your other pastor friends to send to their, to send to their congregations. And we need as many people to fill out the survey as possible. Thank you, Kristen. I appreciate that.
Mr. Davis, I'd like for you to consider us having you out probably at Parker's Ferry or one of the outlining areas that could be
Absolutely.
kind of center for, for others to come so that you can, you know, be in person to explain this as well. Because I was out there this week and in Parker's Ferry. And someone was asking me about affordable housing. She wants to build some of that out there. So I don't know what the plan is yet. How are you going to really cover that except you? I like the idea of the rental house in the rural area because people who live in the rural area tend to want to stay in the rural area. They don't want to go to the city, go to North Charleston, totally different culture.
Right.
Okay, absolutely. So now, so, so I would like for us to come up with ways how we are going to be able to address those children and, you know, and grandchildren who are looking to stay in the rural area. We don't have water and sewer out there, but do you have some kind of housing that you think could work as a affordable housing, you know, type project in those kind of areas? And also, as you mentioned, the having shovel-ready almost projects. That is not going on in the rural area that I know of.
Right.
Certainly not in my district. People have the idea they would like to have affordable housing, but, and they have property. But they don't have a plan already to go because it was nothing in place for them to utilize that kind of you know, plan right now. So, so this is what I'd like for you to do if you could. And I don't mind if anybody that's on the call have some interest. And Reverend Morrison, I'm really thinking about you as well.
We reached out. They wanted to come to Edisto.
Yeah, so if we have some people that have an interest and just don't know how to go about setting this up. Now, some people can run a church, but they never run a little
Absolutely.
housing, you know. So, so if you have that kind of capacity building that you could share with them, I think that that would be the greatest asset for them to start with because you can't go with the shovel-ready project where you don't even know anything about it.
So I've been doing affordable housing development, doing real estate development for the last 30 years, affordable housing for the last 20. It's what I love to do. I love to teach it. And I was actually meeting with a group of nonprofits yesterday that are trying to get into that. To get into that. And what we sort of agreed upon was that I would take a group of them. They would pick a project and essentially we will walk them through how to start from scratch with nothing but an idea. And at some point, we will, you know, we will ask them to take some more formal courses, like with the National Development Council. They have a formal training program for folks, but you're going to need some skills to actually get to that program. So that, putting together those nonprofits who are looking to start this kind of thing with people who may have a piece of land and just an idea and nothing, we can build from that. So absolutely, we, and we want to make those connections. Putting together landowners with nonprofits and essentially building a new building something new to provide housing to people, particularly in the rural areas.
How do you get to be a part of that?
Um, we will put up information on our website. Well, the first thing, we're, this is starting from an idea that I just discussed, actually, it was Monday with a group of nonprofits. So if you get me your information, we are just putting this together from scratch. So we're, you know, we're going to get it all down on paper. Folks are going to say, yes, this is what we're looking for or whatever, and then we'll see how to move forward from there.
Okay.
All right. All questions have been given to Mr. Davis about housing or the business grant, nonprofit grants?
And I have a question about the nonprofit grant. I would like, this is Al Brenda from the Willtown Community Center. What would we have to do to apply for those grants?
So you would basically just go to our website, click the link, and it is spelled out in great detail exactly what you would need to provide. Now, if you're a youth, if you're, if you're a community center, well, anything that you directly spent, you know, providing any kind of relief to, to Charleston County residents is directly reimbursable. Sometimes organizations like yours, it gets a little tricky because you may not have been like handing out food or you may not have been, you know, paying people's rent, but you incurred extra expenses because of the pandemic to, you know, maybe stay open longer or I don't know, whatever the need may be. So if it's not a cut and dry case, we're asking people to reach out to us. Tell us what you think. Tell us what you want to be reimbursed for, and we will try to work within the rules to see if we can get that, to get that expense approved.
Okay, and the website, I didn't get the website.
It's the Charleston County website. If you go to the department.
Put it in the chat. It's in the chat and I'll send it out in the follow-up email at the end so everybody will have it as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay.
And Darryl, I sent you my contact information in the chat privately.
Got it. Thank you. Wait a minute, what do I do with that? I'm not a Zoom expert yet, hang on.
Go to the bottom and you should see something that says.
Got it. I see it. I'm just going to copy it and save it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Davis, for sharing that information with us today.
All right, well, thank you for having me. Anytime.
Okay, and so now we'll have Ms. Sullivan. She's going to talk about the rental assistance. Ms. Dean Sullivan. I think she's on.
Yeah, I'm here. I had to find myself in all these.
Okay. All right. We can hear you now.
I do want to talk about rental assistance just briefly. The county is providing rental assistance to renters within Charleston County who have had a loss of income due to COVID. It has to be related somehow to COVID. Right now, we are still taking applications, but I'm not sure how much longer we'll be doing that. So if you have someone that needs to apply, they need to, to get it in soon. We also need to make sure that if you know anyone who has applied and has not gotten their funds, that they will go in, check their application, see if they have been notified of additional information they need to submit. So on the rental assistance, that's, that's kind of it. The rules are fairly flexible. We have to have, the landlord has to be willing to participate or we can't assist. We have not had any issues with that, so I would think it wouldn't be a problem with anybody out there. I did want to also talk about a few other programs that we have in community, certain community development. We do wells and septic in stock. We do well and septic repairs. That means we can replace it, but we don't, we do not put in new systems. They have, there has to be one there. We also do emergency repairs to houses that have health and safety issues. Applications for those for all of our services can be found at the library on John's Out. So any of you out there in Ms. Johnson's district, you can probably find an application for it. Or you can call our office at 843 202 69 I'm sorry. 6960. Um, that, that's really all I have. If you guys have questions or Ms. Johnson has questions.
Okay, well, I do have one. You said the application is on John's Island. What about Parker, Hollywood? St. Paul's Library?
Hollywood should have caught, have the application out there. We usually them off. If I find out we don't, we'll get out there, but they can also call the office and we'll give them something.
Now, with home repairs, I know there was a dollar limit of $10,000. And, and do you have a waiting list or are you all able to take applications and qualify people, you know, right away? How's that working?
Okay, we have a, we have a limit of $20,000 and there's also a list of huge housing issues that we deal with. So it has to be health and safety related. So if someone's roof is leaking and it's going to damage the house, if they, if their bathroom is not working, if they need a ramp, there's, there's a specific list. Unfortunately, we don't, we can't do them right away. Their HUD requires that we do an environmental review before we do them. That takes 30 to 45 days. Once that's done, then they will be on a waiting list for one of our sub recipients. We don't have things. We don't have any criteria set up to try to help the most in need because the truth is, most of the people that apply to us are, are the most in need. So we've never had any way to, you know, to say that we'll serve one person over the other. Our subs, they're the ones that do the work. We, we hire several nonprofit organizations every year to do our repairs for us. And this year we have three, I think, except the town of Long Dog does their own, but we they do have a waiting list. And I don't think it's that long. So it never hurts to call if you need something. And if you call here, we can give you the information too about who those nonprofits are that's doing our repairs right.
And can you, can you just share some of the kinds of repairs? Did I miss that? I know you all do the roofing and flooring.
The roofing, we do flooring if it's a danger. We, we will do bathrooms, we'll do ramps. We don't do weatherization projects. But it needs to be, like I said, health and safety related. So if it's a, you know, causing a health issue or causing, like a roof, if it's causing damage to the floors and all that, we will replace those.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. And some of the pastors that are on, maybe that's something you can pass on to your permissioners, the senior citizens that may have those kinds of problems. All right, Ms. Sullivan, thank you so much for sharing.
You're welcome.
Okay, and now we have the EMS building that we're going to discuss with Mr. Smalls and the building facilities. So who's going to lead that? Sabatino?
Yes, yes.
Sabatino, okay.
Yes. Good afternoon, Ms. Johnson. Um Phil Sabatino to everyone, uh Director of Facilities Management. And um what we're gonna do is just give you an overview today of uh EMS eight, which is also gonna serve as a um substation for the sheriff's office. And we'll cover, we'll give a overview of the scope of work and some of the features, uh what the schedule's looking like now. And then uh also have a nice little video clip uh at the end, which is kind of like a fly-through rendering. And uh the uh Facility Design and Construction Manager, uh Carl Wolf files on. He'll actually go through the presentation and we also have Paul Wood, who is the uh project manager on it uh as well, too, in case there's any questions, uh we'd be happy to answer those. Uh so Carl, you wanna take it from here and
Yeah.
Through the presentation?
Thanks, Phil. Uh so uh like Phil said, my name's Carl Wolfile, Design and Construction Manager for Facilities. Uh now, we're responsible for design and construction of many new facilities uh within uh the county staff. I'm gonna share my screen here and show some slides here to help with this presentation. Um hopefully, everybody can see that. Um so this picture right here is um the current EMS eight on on Edisto. Um there's a one-acre lot there and approximately a little bit more than a thousand square foot, the main structure. Um with a single bay garage in the back, as you can see. Uh it was originally built in nineteen seventy-one as a residence. It's one-story, one-block, it's got block exterior and shingle roof. And in nineteen ninety-eight, the county purchased it when uh the new service center was built in in St. Paul, Hollywood. Uh the Adams Run EMS EMS eight was relocated to Edisto Island to bring services to that community. Um county staff renovated and adapted that building and have continually maintained it and uh repaired it and improved it uh to date. In fact, the most recent one was in two thousand twenty-one, we installed a water filtration system on it. Existing utilities there are, it's got electric power uh and backup generator, but it's on well and septic. Um this was initially a very viable solution uh back in the day when we moved operations there. It was a financially sound move to repurpose this structure to bring services to the community quickly. Uh but over time, the aging facility uh and the components inside of it, uh and because of changes and improvement to EMS operations uh have kind of caused us to realize that we need to update uh the the facilities on on Edisto. Uh and bring them a fully capable EMS station. So in April of two thousand twenty-one, we began researching the possibility of a new EMS station for the Edisto community. Uh and EMS Department evaluated the best location for different responses times. And they confirmed that this location here where the existing structure was, is really the best location on the on the island. Uh and so over the summer, we developed the scope and identified a broad opinion of cost for budgeting purposes. And in September um of twenty-one last year, we we were authorized to proceed with the design. So right now, we're about sixty-five percent complete. Um that design includes um the uh two large parking bays for the county service vehicles located there. Um that's where they can park and maintain and service multiple vehicles more than they can now. Uh it includes an office and communication room, includes kitchen and dining area plus a dayroom and four separate single bunk rooms. It'll have restrooms, laundry room and and also a fitness room. It'll have lockers for equipment and storage for resupply for both EMS and for a sheriff's deputy presence there. So sheriff's deputy can come and resupply as needed and also refit and do things that they need to to stay and keep a presence on Edisto. Um I also want to point out that there's the large open bay is also a potential area for uh a community space. So the timeline for this project is we're currently in the design phase. We're about halfway through, a little bit past halfway through. And we uh project completion of design to be in September of this year. Then there'll be a short period where we're um contracting it out to a builder. And we expect to start construction either in December of this year or January of twenty-three. And then construction will go for approximately a year projected, and we estimate to be completed by the end of two thousand twenty-three. Hopefully with a move-in and occupation date of January two thousand twenty-four. Um I'd like to show this quick fly-through video of of a rendering that was produced by Rosenbloom Co. Architects. And this shows uh all the features around in and around the exterior of the building. So approaching down Highway one seventy-four from north to south, uh you come up on to it on the right and pull into the entrance drive. You've got parking for the public out front. Opening up into a secured gated and fenced-off area in the rear with backup generator, water storage, parking for staff in the back. And then also an entrance for through the bay from the from the rear, also additional parking in the back. The architects tried to stay with the uh the the architectural theme for the external portion of it is uh in line with um other structures on Edisto as well. And that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions at this point, I'd like to go ahead and field those.
Well. Okay, go ahead, Reverend Morrison.
I said it looks good to me. Very good.
I was gonna make that comment myself. I'm ready to see it right now, this year. Y'all, y'all talking about twenty-four?
Can't come soon enough.
My gosh.
Yeah, take a little time, take a little time, make that stuff happen.
We had it in the works by now, ready to go.
Well, uh Reverend Morrison was certainly uh one of the big voices that asked about this, and I'm glad to see that uh we've gotten as far with the design of it. And so now is the outside, is is that what you're really looking at? Uh presenting the outside like that, because I think it's a beautiful, I like the colors and the brick and everything else around it.
That that is the proposed um look of it. Um I don't think the colors are finalized, but um I I think that it'll be very close to that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then uh you will be presenting this to uh the residents for them to look at before you actually put it out for bid for building.
But we can't, we can do that.
Well, that's not your intention.
I'm not sure what the protocol is. I'll defer to Phil or Walt on that.
Um we can, we can uh uh make that available for the residents to look at it before uh uh we put it out. We generally do a rendering of the uh project, uh just like we do all all our construction uh projects. And we certainly can put that out for the residents to uh look at. But at that point, we are like a hundred percent and ready to start construction. So uh it'll be coming out, so folks can uh get a good look at.
All right. I think that's a good idea to let them uh uh be in that process because they 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 might want to help you with the color.
Uh some may like blue, some may like black, some may like some other.
That's right.
The long to select.
That's right.
It's good to me.
Okay. All right, Reverend Morrison, so you'll have to work when we get ready to have that meeting out there to get your folks to come out and give their opinion about it.
Right, we will do that anytime.
Okay. All right. Well, you can proceed. Oh, and then you talked about the uh sheriff's office um having space there as well.
Yes, that was included.
So so that's, that's a good thing that we've got that worked out, along with the uh community being able to use uh the bay at some point uh for community uh events.
Ms. Johnson, we can provide, we can provide pictures uh of the design as it is right now in the email that um Kristen's gonna send out to all the
Okay.
Participants, and and they can use that to put put out the the renderings now for input.
Okay, well, I certainly would like to do that. Thank you. Anybody else have any uh questions or comments about it? The EMS station on Edisto? Oh, okay. Does that conclude your um presentation for?
It does, yes.
I see three heads nodding. I'll tell you, okay, done.
Uh whatever they can do to expedite it, be very helpful.
I'm sure.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson has pushed this thing. It it's kind of on a fast track now. It came up one week and we started designing the next week. And you were there, uh Reverend Morrison, pushing it as well. So it is on fast track.
We appreciate what you do. We appreciate what you do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I really do. I guess we're just so anxious now, they've been looking at that, you know, that house uh from the seventies for so long. And just wanted to make sure we could uh upgrade things and bring them into the twenty-first century or the twenty-second century. Okay, anyone else? Our last go-around. Okay, well, I certainly want to thank all of you uh for uh the information that you have presented here today. And uh we're just so happy to see, hear from all of you because you all had really good information to share. Uh Ms. Wurstner, do we have a um our plan for next month, um topic?
Yes, ma'am. We have um Charleston County Parks and Recreation that's gonna come and give all updates on what's going on in District Eight. And then we also have our Environmental Management Deputy Director that's gonna come and give updates to our recycling schedule. Um that's gonna be changing here June eighth, so before June eighth comes, we're gonna get him to come on and tell you guys what the changes are.
Okay, all right. Well, that sounds good to me. Well, until next time. You all have a great day.
All right, good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank all of you.
Thank you for all you do.
Okay, you're welcome.